This is 2:30 sharp, so I call to order today's meeting, which is the special meeting of the Panel on Security. And I'd like to explain to members about this meeting first, because on the 6th of August, I received a letter from Ms. Sit Ho requesting for the holding of this special meeting, discussion on the police's handling of different parties at public meetings, and in particular, whether the Police General Orders are applicable to police officers on pre-retirement leave. So she's asked for a special meeting on this issue. And on the 12th of August, we received a letter from Mr. Wong Kwok Kim calling for a meeting or calling for the issues to be discussed at the meeting. And that is regarding provocative behaviour against police officers at public meetings and public processions. I'm explaining to members right now, and the former member mentioned was Ms. Sit Ho. And on the 14th of August, I received a joint a letter jointly signed by 23 members requesting for a discussion on the police's handling of different parties at public meetings and public processions. So they have asked for a special meeting. And having considered the grounds, I didn't find any urgency in the matter for the calling of a special meeting. However, I respected members' views for a discussion to be held on this topic. So I've agreed that we should have a special meeting to discuss this issue before the last call session resumes. And that's why we are here at this meeting. I just want to remind you not to mix up the names of members. All right, so that's the arrangement for today's meeting. And in the interim, Ms. Sit Ho made another request suggesting that the representatives of IPCC be invited to attend this special meeting. I considered her request. I considered that the IPCC is investigating and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you for correcting me, Mr. Wong. And I think that since IPCC is investigating and handling the matter, I don't think it's appropriate to invite their representatives to attend this meeting. We do have representatives from the police force as well as the security bureau. So this is the background information regarding this special meeting. And we have with us today Mr. Leitong Kwak, Secretary for Security; Mrs. Milli Ng, Principal Assistant Secretary for Security; and Mr. Wong Chi Hong, Director of Operations, Hong Kong Police Force; and Mr. Lam Man Wing, Assistant Commissioner of Police; and also from the Hong Kong Police Force, Mr. Wong Yew Sam, Superintendent Licensing. So the arrangement for today's meeting will be as follows. I will invite the administration to take us through briefly the paper before I open the floor for discussion by members. But I will first invite Ms. Sit Ho and Mr. Wong Kwok Kim to lay their grounds for calling for this special meeting. And then I'll see if any members would like to ask questions or to speak. And I have the following list: Mr. Ms. Elizabeth Kwak, Chan Ha Ken, Lam Tai Phi, Wong Yook Man, Lee Cheung Yan, and Yu Si Wing, and also Yip Kin Yun. So, Secretary, please. Thank you, Chairman. Well, today's discussion is on the police's handling of different parties at public meetings over the past two months, and also for police officers attending who are on pre-retirement leave regarding their attendance of public meetings, and also regarding provocative behaviour against police officers at public meetings and public processions. First of all, in relation to the incident happened on the 14th of July regarding a clash between two groups with different positions, and also the another incident on the 4th of August in Mong Kok regarding a police officer on pre-retirement leave attending a public meeting. The we have adhered to the relevant established mechanism to handle this matter in a fair and impartial manner. And it is not the appropriate time to make my comment. And I'd like to respond to members' comments. First of all, in relation to the police's handling of public order events, I'd like to reiterate that the police has always abided by the laws of Hong Kong and handled all public order events in an impartial and fair manner and just manner. All public order events organized by regardless of the organizers of the events will be handled by one set of single one set of principles by the police. And a balance has to be struck between the event and also the disturbance caused to road users. In relation to public meetings with the attendance of different parties with different positions, as long as they abide by the law in expressing their different views, the police will also abide by will act in accordance with the law. On the other hand, any illegal behaviour or breach of peace will be dealt with in an impartial manner by the police in accordance with the law. And regarding different parties with different positions, the police would adopt crowd management controls by implementing segregation measures. During public processions or public meetings, all attendees should also abide by the law and respect others' rights to freedom of expression and to observe the law and order. Any illegal behaviour, breach of social peace or public order will be tackled by the police by means of decisive measures in order to maintain public order and ensure public safety. The other point I wish to mention is about the respect for the police to enforce the law. I'd like to disseminate this important message at this meeting. Whilst we enjoy the freedom of assembly and freedom of expression, I urge everyone to respect the police officers' duties in enforcing the law and maintaining law and order. Recently, we have seen more and more heated incidents at public meetings and public processions with different parties of different positions. And we've also seen incidents when the members of the public insulted police officers. This has imposed immense pressure on frontline police officers. The police officers enforce the law. They act in accordance with the law in protecting public in maintaining order and ensuring public safety. They should be respected. Our frontline police officers have remained calm in carrying out their duties and maintaining law and order. This is well-recognized. In order to tackle the increasing challenges and in maintaining our high level of service to the public, and also for effective enforcement of the law, the police will continue to provide the relevant training to police officers, including programs on relevant legislation and the application, assistance to be rendered to organizers for the orderly conduct of public order events, and formulation of contingency plans. New recruits and other police officers will also be given training on emotion management in order to tackle various challenges. Members, I myself and Mr. Wong from the Hong Kong Police Force would be happy to take questions from members and exchange views with members. Thank you, Secretary. So I'll open the floor for questions and comments. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through. Ms. Sit Ho?
Thank you, Chairman. I wrote to you previously, but since that letter, many incidents happened in this one month or so. So I have some questions which may not be within the scope of the letter. The first point is about the impartiality of the police in enforcing the law and in accordance with a declaration made by the police or statement made by the police in August. The police stated that the police officers also enjoy the same rights as members of the public. However, police officers are not ordinary citizens. They are equipped with weapons. And sometimes, members of the public may be agitated. They may insult the police. But a professional police officer should not be provoked or affected by such remarks or behaviour in enforcing the law. And the Chairman of the IPCC also stated that we have seen more and more clashes between the police and the public. Now, we see the police treated different groups in different manners. For example, a member of the Scholarism was accused was or made an allegation of being assaulted. However, the police refused to take action because the name of the suspect was not known. However, in ordinary cases, names of suspects would never be known in the first place. And the police would still need to carry out their duties. So when the police say that they have been enforcing the law in a fair and impartial manner, I'd like the police to reflect on themselves. Why are they giving the public an impression that they're not being fair? If they do not reflect on themselves, their relations with the public will just continue to deteriorate. And regarding the their declaration on the in early August, which states that the police also enjoys the same freedom of expression as ordinary citizens, I'd like to know who made the final decision on this declaration on our statement? Have they read all the authorities and and other case laws in the European Court of Human Rights and other jurisdictions that police officers should be professionals in avoiding being provoked? And police also have different they're also in different position. For example, they are prohibited from forming labor unions. And when police officers, when they're off duty, when they do attend public meetings and see their fellow colleagues in uniform, do they really consider that there is no impact? Now, about the public meeting at Sai Yong Choy Street in Mong Kok, well, there were photos on the internet showing off-duty officers attending public meetings. So do you really think that there is no impact on the police force at all? Or do you agree that if police officers are off duty, they can attend public meetings as they like? Secretary?
Well, thank you, Chairman. I cannot agree with Ms. Sit Ho that the police is not enforcing the law in a fair and impartial manner. As I said in the opening address, in recent public meetings and processions, there were heated clashes between different groups. However, the majority of public meetings in Hong Kong have been held in an orderly manner and peaceful manner. As for the example cited by Ms. Sit Ho, I'd like to invite Superintendent Mr. Wong to respond to her. Well, I'm running out of time, so, Secretary, can you tell me? Should offline off-duty police officers attend political assemblies or not? Or do you think that they have to write? Now, police officers are regulated by the Police General Orders, section six, chapter 6, 6.0134, that they should avoid attending any activity which may affect their impartiality in carrying out their official duties. And they include political meetings, dissemination of political leaflets, and canvassing votes for political groups, etc. The police issued a statement on the 4th of August. Based on the information gathered there and then, and also the circumstances then, that was the judgment passed on the basis of chapter 6, bracket 34 of the Police General Orders. Mr. Wong, please.
Well, you have one minute. Well, in short, I'd like to say that in relation to criminal allegations, we adopt the same set of principles in handling these allegations, regardless of the person's background or the political affiliation. We conduct investigation in the same manner. And when there is sufficient evidence, the case will be sent to court.
Mr. Wong Kwok Kim? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As to whether the police are being professional in law enforcement, I'm sure there are many channels to complain and forums for discussion. I'm sure we have got a proper channel to follow this up. But what I have seen and as seen in the media and on the internet, it is worrying, that is, the police are being confronted during the course of the study. And it's very radical. They're being provoked, they're being insulted, they are being confronted head-on, and they're getting more and more of this. I want to ask a question. Frontline policemen are human beings, like everybody else. So can it be just because they're police officers and they have to be professional and therefore they have to tolerate such insults? I think for ordinary human beings in private, if we are not any particular body, I think when faced with such insults, we may easily resort to a fight. But then it seems that just because they're policemen, they have to tolerate it, they have to swallow it, and they can't answer back. So my question for the Secretary is as follows. Police officers are there to maintain public order and to maintain and uphold public safety. But other than professionalism, police officers should also enjoy dignity. Can the word professionalism means that they have to give up their dignity? Now, for the ordinary citizens, when they see that for police officers on duty, if they can't safeguard their own dignity, then they have doubts as to whether the policeman can protect the personal safety of the citizens. So my question is, in maintaining the self-dignity and professional dignity of frontline police officers at a time of discharging their duties, I want to know what the government has got to put in place to deal with the problem? From the reply given today, I don't see any response to this point. You only talked about professional training and emotional management. So does it mean that you try to train the police officers so that whenever they hear an insulting word, they will then just switch off? Or are you going to train them in such a way that even when they get insulted, they will still laugh heartily? Thank you, Mr. Wong. I think the views raised by Mr. Wong are very different from what Ms. Sit Ho had said, and they're even opposing. All citizens in Hong Kong, including police officers, like Mr. Wong had said, they are also part of the community. And everybody, including people discharging their duties, when insulted or confronted or challenged, will not feel good about it. In Mr. Wong's question, he asked us as to what we have got for the police officers. In reply, we have said that we have provided a lot of training so as to enhance the professionalism, so that when confronted, they will still be calm and restrained, so that they can still continue with their duties. That's what the police management have done for them. As far as the administration is concerned, we have to give full support to the police force so that they can discharge their duties in a fair, just, and impartial manner in accordance with the laws of Hong Kong, irrespective of the background and position of the groups challenging them. Of course, when there is a breach of the law, then the police force will take appropriate action. Say, for example, there was a public procession, there was a demonstration. Someone blew a whistle next to the ear of a police officer. And this clip was widely circulated on the internet. After investigation, the related persons were arrested and with the agreement of the Department of Justice. Mr. Chairman, owing to the lack of time, I hope the Secretary will be more concise and specific in his reply. In other places, they do have a law against insulting the police officers. Are we going along the same line? We don't have plan to do so for the time being. But we've got sufficient laws to protect our frontline policemen. Say, for example, obstructing a police officer in the course of his duty and assaulting a police officer, examples of offences. I just want to say that police officers can't rely on themselves to discharge the duties and enforce the law. We have to count on the community as well. For frontline officers, a smile, a look off your head from the community will be very encouraging so that they can persist in their job. Mr. Michael Tian and then Ms. Elizabeth Kwat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, I've got three questions. I've read the papers from the administration. I understand that the administration would like to strike a balance, striving to facilitate a smooth conduct of lawful and peaceful public meetings and processions on one hand, while on the other hand, minimizing the impact of such events on members of the public road users. But recently, the motorists, in particular taxi drivers, have told me that in recent years, they have found demonstrators rushing onto the road, obstructing traffic, jeopardizing the safety of both drivers and passengers. So my question is, what can be done and what has been done to achieve the objective in your paper that is minimizing the impact on members of the public and the road users? The second question is, in your paper, you have said that you have a way to deal with occasions when police officers are being insulted. Well, I want to know what is the justice? I'm also learning how to make sure that I am in line with the requirements of parliamentary and authoritarian language. So what is the definition? Do you have any guidelines? Are you going to disclose them so that we know where you draw the line? So is it possible for you to give us the figures concerning the number of cases in which policemen have been called insulted and whether there have been any prosecution? And then taking appropriate segregation measures to facilitate expression of views, including the designation of public activity areas. I think it is important to cool the demonstrators down. I understand you've done a lot in terms of training, but is it adequate? And are you happy with the outcome? So I've got three points, Secretary. Allow me to answer the first question, and then for the other two questions, I will ask Mr. Wong to answer the questions. I'd like to thank Mr. Tian for pointing out the following. That is, usually, a public meeting will take up quite a large part of the road space. And so to a certain extent, the other road users will be inconvenienced. Therefore, we have to strike a balance. As the law stands, we safeguard the right to have the freedom of expression. But at the same time, such a freedom cannot be asserted while jeopardizing the other road users in their legitimate use of the road. So from time to time, we have seen demonstrators complaining that they have been prevented from walking through. They have to be stopped. This is because from time to time, we have to stop the procession so that the traffic can move on. Otherwise, the other road users cannot use the road, and then that means we cannot strike a balance. But of course, for any public meetings and processions, as Mr. Michael Tian had said, motorists and pedestrians will be inconvenienced. We hope that the community would be understanding. At the same time, the police and the Transport Department will do our best, first of all, to make sure that emergency vehicles will have free access. And secondly, the trunk roads will be kept through so that traffic can still move along. In fact, there was a court case in which there was a judgment saying that while exercising the right of the freedom of expression and the right to have meetings and processions, etc., we still have to discharge our duties. So it is not easy. The balance is not easy. We are not able to satisfy both parties all the time. Mr. Wong? Mr. Tian also asked a question about insulting the police. Well, we have noted this issue. But then in Hong Kong, as it stands, it is not an offence. So we haven't got any official or formal guideline on such matters. Therefore, I don't have any figures concerning the number of offences committed as well as the number of persons arrested. Mr. Lam Kwok Hong, please don't speak while please don't make any noise while you're seated, because Mr. Wong is speaking. Please do not talk to yourself. I've also got a third question, Mr. Wong. Yes, in relation to this third question, cooling down the atmosphere while there is a confrontation. Mr. Tian would like to know about the training provided. Indeed, as a caring organization, we've done a lot in this regard. We try to use different ways to help our colleagues to make sure that they can cope with the adversity and to cope with the pressure. Well, in fact, there are eight professional clinical psychologists in our force, and we've also got welfare officers to help our colleagues to receive counselling. Sorry, I'm not talking about emotional management. I want to know how you are training your officers to acquire the skills to mediate? And have you got such? Yes, indeed. Like, say, for example, for a traffic police officer booking a motorist, there may be a confrontational situation. And for other frontline officers, say, for example, during a public meeting or public procession, we should try our best to make sure that there will be as little conflict as possible. Thank you, Ms. Elizabeth Kwat. If I may pick up the point made by Mr. Wong. He talked about citing the offence of obstructing a police officer in order to deal with the confrontation. Well, in the past year or two, we have seen many video clips on the internet concerning public meetings or public processions. When police officers were discharging their duties, the police officers were being insulted in public by the demonstrators. Now, we've been told that you do train the police officers so that when they are confronted, when they are insulted, they should try their best to exercise they should try their best to exercise self-restraint. However, on the internet, we have seen many video clips. People shouted foul language at the police officers, insulting the police officers, hurling profanities by the side of his ear. So I think it is already a clear case of obstructing a police officer in discharging his duty. But then, the police officers seem to turn a deaf ear to it and continue with their duties. So I want to know whether this is your standard, whether this is your guideline. Can you not cite the offence or invoke the offence of obstructing a police officer so as to stop the use of foul language to insult the police officers?
Now, the second question, Chairman, I'd like to ask is about the clash between the Hong Kong Youth Care Association and Falun Gong. And they have been putting up banners and placards and obliterating each other's banners and occupying space, et cetera. And these behaviours have, in fact, impacted upon the ordinary citizens. And it was said that the police could not handle the matter. And my question is whether the police has any ways of tackling these incidents concerning different parties? Because I think if this continues, it will be a waste of police power. So on, thank you, Chairman. Now, in relation to obstructing a police officer in the execution of his official duty. Now, if the police officer is able to fulfill his official duty, regardless of whether he has been insulted, as long as the duty has been carried out, the police officer is advised to leave as soon as possible without having any altercation with the other party. And there is also a requirement by the court. If the other party has not done anything to physically obstruct the officers carrying out of his duties, then this offence doesn't apply. So our principle is to carry out the duties as quick as possible and to leave once it is completed. And when there is indeed an obstruction, then the law will be enforced. As for the clash between the Hong Kong Youth Care Association and Falun Gong. Now, as Secretary mentioned just now, regardless of their positions or their background, they should have their rights and freedoms to express their views freely, as long as this is done in a lawful and orderly manner. We try our best to accommodate them. But if banners of a large quantity are used, then we may have to enforce the law. Chairman, follow-up question. Now, from the reply, I understand that if members of the public insult police officers, then I think it's kind of an obstruction. That means after a driver's book, say, for example, if the driver insults a police officer, then there is no way the police could resolve the matter. So if this goes on, then how can the police continue to maintain enforcement of the law?
Director. I hope members of the public would understand the police's difficulty in law enforcement. We urge the public to work with us in combating crimes and maintaining law and order. So I once again urge members of the public to respect the police and cooperate with the police. Next, Mr. Kwak Wai Kha. I think the general public believes that we have a highly efficient police force who are very well-trained and in combating crimes and maintaining law and order. Our police force is very efficient. However, our police officers also need to tackle various matters from litter bugs to noise problems to even disputes between neighbours. So they have a heavy workload. And I understand that they carry guns. And I understand that they therefore are subject to some kind of pressure. And one of the members who wrote a letter, Ms. Sit Ho, said, was blatant enough to say that teenagers would definitely be emotional, whereas police officers should remain calm. But as a representative of the labor sector, I must say that every employee or every worker should be protected at work. Yes, police officers receive professional training. But does it mean that they can be punchbacks of aggrieved citizens? We don't want to see that. Some police officers do tell us that they hope the administration would consider enacting a law, the law regarding insult against police officers. Now, regarding the freedom of speech. Now, a survey is being conducted at the moment. But I believe that every citizen enjoys the freedom of expression. Now, our honourable members also believe in the same. Why is it that they are adopting a double standard? By saying that off-duty police officers must not express their views, even if they are off-duty. So when can these police officers express their own views? How can we have a double standard? We're all one of the seven million in Hong Kong. Why are harsh requirements imposed on our police officers? Why are they oppressed in such a manner? we see this kind of extremities in Hong Kong. Yes, the police enforces the law. But some unreasonable citizens or demonstrators deployed different tactics. In front of the media, they might be very obedient in the face of police officers. But behind the camera lens, they might do whatever they want. I think they should also abide by the established mechanism in lodging a complaint against us, police officers, instead of having a debate in the street like Ms. Lam did. They should abide by the effective and established mechanism in complaining against the police. So I hope the Secretary could respond to my comments. Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Kwak.
I think I share the same views as Mr. Kwak and many members of the public. We're human beings, we have emotions. If we are treated as punchbacks, then of course we'll feel upset. All our police officers are professionally trained. They exercise restraint. And I believe the general public understand and are also supportive of them. Every time I visited communities, I visited district councils and the district fight crime committees and various sectors of the community. I repeatedly heard the same views. They expressed their staunch support for the hard work of our police officers. I think in Hong Kong, which is a civilized, modernized city, no one would like to see anyone throwing verbal abuse at anyone. Apart from the police force, there are also other law-enforcing officers in different government departments. If they do not get the support and understanding of the general public in exercising their official duties and enforcing the law, then the whole society will stay put. Well, a question was asked on whether the law on insult against police officers should be enacted. Now, I'd like to stress once again that I appeal to members of the public to work with the police in maintaining law and order in Hong Kong. And there should be mutual understanding and mutual respect so that we join hands in making it work. Next, Mr. Eleanor.
Thank you, Chairman. The Civic Party understands that it is a very huge challenge for police officers to enforce the law in such a highly polarized society at the moment. According to our observation, the majority of police officers have been able to stay firm in carrying out their duties. However, I think the Secretary cannot deny this. Now, let's talk about the public meeting in Mong Kok on that occasion. Well, there were police officers in PTU uniforms have engaging in an altercation with members of the public. And that was recorded on video. This is not what we want to see. the general public would also like to see the police being fair and impartial in carrying out their duties. So if they express their views or political views in public and if they say they support one group during a public procession and attack the other group, this is unacceptable to us. We're not saying that a police officer should enjoy any less freedom of expression than ordinary citizens do. Now, tomorrow is the National Day, and there'll be a flag-raising ceremony at the Bohina Square. We recall that last year, some members of Scholarism and several members of the public in black outfit stayed in a public gallery or public area. They did not do anything, they did not chant any slogan or displayed any placard or banners, and yet they were invited to leave. There was a discussion in the community afterwards. And the media made some inquiries. And then the Home Affairs Department then replied by saying that according to the relevant guidelines, any person who intervened the ceremony would be invited to leave. And we doubt whether the enforcement of the code or guidelines on attending flag-raising ceremonies have been done in an objective manner. Now, tomorrow is the National Day, and there'll be a flag-raising ceremony. So what should people do to avoid being accused of intervening or interfering with the flag-raising ceremony? Secretary, can you tell us something about last year's experience? And then explain to us what will happen tomorrow? How would the law be enforced?
Now, the police is not responsible for preparing the relevant code or guidelines. And during such occasions, the police's duty is to check if public order has been breached. And when on the request of the staff or the unit responsible for managing the venue, the police would offer assistance in helping them maintain order.
Mr. Leng mentioned an incident that took place last year. And in fact, for all sorts of events, major or small in scale, we've always been following such a guideline. Well, I would also like to comment on the question of being neutral. The relevant police general orders have made it very clear as to why police officers have to avoid taking part in activities which may prevent him from being impartial in the discharge of his duties. This is because we don't want to give people the impression that in future, when police officers discharge duties, they may be biased. For many years, we've always been upholding this principle. That is, whenever we have to make a judgment, we will look at the facts we have and will also apply this guideline. As to the other question asked by Mr. Leng, I'll defer to Mr. Wong. Please be brief. For radical scenes, Mr. Leng said that it appeared that a PTU officer was having a shouting match with a demonstrator. We don't encourage this. Probably, it was a natural response from that officer, and he uttered some noises. But then if the person involved was not satisfied with the officer's response, he could certainly make a complaint to the IP, to the couple.
Mr. Chen. Well, the principal officials under the accountability system are under a lot of pressure. And our frontline police officers are also under a lot of pressure when they enforce the law. So in fact, when you try to look at the, watch the video clips on the internet, a lot of them are about law enforcement activities by the policemen. Say, for example, being accused of being unfair in booking traffic offences or litter offences. Many others are in relation to demonstrations, et cetera. I took a look of a video clip dated the 14th of July. I don't want to talk about the nature of that clip. I don't want to cause unnecessary trouble. But then I could see for myself that a police officer was being insulted for quite a long period of time. I don't want to comment on whether the police officer was being right or wrong in his approach. This is because with the IPCC dealing with such matters. But then for an ordinary citizen, for you to be humiliated for half an hour's time, I think you need to look at that in the context of professionalism. I don't think the police officer committed any cardinal sin. I think he was merely discharging his duty. So on my part, having watched the video clip, I felt sorry for him. And not to mention the sentiments on the part of the police officer involved. Today, the S4S, as well as the police representatives, gave some replies to our questions concerning the admin's response to the humiliation suffered by the police officers. It appears that there isn't anything that you have done or can do. So in this light, how are you going to maintain the morale of the frontline police officers so that they can still? so that they can still help us to make sure that Hong Kong is a safe city? Second question is, I've also noted that there was a teacher who scolded a police officer persistently for quite a long period of time. I'm sure this video clip has been seen many times. Later on, she received some intimidating letters when she was threatened. She went to make a complaint to the police. And she also complained about the police, saying that the police was not too, didn't care too much about her complaint. Now, S4S, you have said that you are being fair and just. So is it true that you didn't quite care enough for the complaint made by the teacher? Mr. Wong Yook Man, it isn't your turn to speak. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, for showing your support and for being so understanding. I think we all treasure the good condition of law and order in Hong Kong. For the morale of the frontline police officers, indeed, it is important to enhance and maintain the morale. Of course, there are many different things that we can do. First of all, as I have said, we hope that the public can show more care and encouragement for the police officers, in particular those at the frontline. I've noted that in relation to the surveys covering the law enforcement agencies, I think the Hong Kong Police Force has enjoyed a very good rating. And recently, in relation to the performance of service servants, again, the police force was given an award. I think it is an encouragement. Showing care for the frontline officers is certainly one of the ways to do it. And then through publicity and proper education, I think we can help the public to understand, on the one hand, their own rights, and, on the other hand, their understanding that our police officers at the frontline, when discharging their duties, will have to face different sorts of difficulties and pressure. I hope there will be mutual understanding and accommodation so that we can cope with any disputes that may emerge. Mr. Chen referred to a specific case, and he referred to the details about the report. I would like to defer to Mr. Wong.
Well, in relation to the reporting of a case to us, we do have an established set of procedures. Allow me to repeat myself. In respect of the background or position of the complainant, we will be applying the same standards and the same methodology. Mr. Lam Tai Fai and then Mr. Raymond Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Secretary, you have given us mechanical and routine replies. I'm really disappointed. I think this is very frustrating for the frontline police officers. Members of the public do expect the police to be fair, just, impartial, calm, restrained, and acting in accordance with the laws when discharging their duties. But at the same time, members of the public are also concerned as to whether the police can maintain law and order effectively, efficiently, and maintain public order and safeguard our property and personal safety. Well, Secretary, to be frank with you, the majority of the community respect the police officers. In the past, we used to see the police officers as symbols of bravery, and therefore a positive image. But I'm afraid that in recent years, such a positive image has been eroded. Now, we have become to be called the sitter of public meetings, public processions, and demonstrations. Can we build our pride on it? But in fact, during such public order events, police officers are faced with the radical action of individuals. They are being challenged, they're insulted, and even stones or different sorts of articles are being hurled at them. Now, the administration has been emphasizing being calm and restrained. However, I don't think you have to keep silent just because you want to be fair, just and impartial. Being excessively calm and tolerant would be regarded as a sign of weakness. If you just hold back, it means that the public will find that you are being irresponsible. Now, as Mr. Wong Kwok Kean has said, police officers are human beings. You try to talk about emotional management. I think you have done a good job because you have never answered back, even when scolded. But do you appreciate the pressure suffered by the frontline police officers? What is the level of pressure that they have to take? Now, police officers are human beings. They are not robots, and they will have fatigue. And S4S, you are the head. For today's reply, you are being very weak. You don't show any strength at all. I'm afraid the public will lose confidence and trust in the police officers. I'm afraid that the day may come when people no longer regard policing work as a work of bravery or something which is very sacred, rather we will think that it is not, it is something very obnoxious. So who will then take care of the law and order in Hong Kong? You've always been asking the police officers to learn to control and manage their emotions. But do you know about their pressure? And maybe one day, you run out of officers, and then there's nobody for you to deploy. So S4S, do you understand the level of pressure suffered by the frontline police officers? Do you have anything specific to deal with it? Don't just repeat the same two words, emotional management. It is just too vague, and the public are very worried. We're worried for our property and our personal safety. We're worried that the society would become a city of chaos.
S4S, thank you, Mr. Lam, for your comments. For what I've been seeing since the beginning of this meeting, I spoke from the bottom of my heart, and I've been sincere. It is not a mechanical reply. In fact, I have had many opportunities to talk to police officers at various levels, and I fully understand the difficulties and challenges faced by frontline policemen. Last year, this term of the government came into office, and I had the opportunity to meet with hundreds of police officers. I listened in person to their views. I cited an example. During a demonstration, somebody whistled, blew a whistle close to the year of a police officer. If I remember correctly, we were talking about auxiliary police officer. So he was serving the community during his spare time. And yet, what did he get in return? Somebody blew a whistle close to his year. We are very clear, the police officers are enforcing the law. We act in accordance with the laws. Should there be a breach of the law, we will not withdraw, and there won't be any fear, there won't be any fear, and we won't be giving concessions in the discharge of our duties. Now, there are people who have dishonest understanding. We only arrest the people, but we don't prosecute them. Well, in fact, we are the law enforcement agency. We arrest offenders, and then we collect the evidence. And then the risk will be taken up by the Department of Justice, and they will decide as to whether a charge will be pressed. And at the prosecution stage and/or after that, it will be the court that will look at the evidence tendered by both parties, and then will come to a judgment and a ruling. As to the case I referred to, the same procedures were gone through, and then the court ruled on the case. The court discharges the duty, and then I have got the judgment with me, but I'm not going to spend time to read it out. However, the court has sent out a loud and clear message. The court is not going to tolerate any law-breaking behavior and will not tolerate anything that insults the police. The court adopts a very serious view, a solemn view. Why? This is, as Mr. Lam has said, we need a police force to maintain our law and order. And therefore, the court has adopted a very serious view of such matters.
Mr. Wong Yook Man, followed by Mr. Lee Che Yan. Thank you, Chairman. Now, this secretary became such a big deal after meeting the Mr. Zhang Dejiang, a member of the Politburo. So today, you adopted a bureaucratic tone, and you displayed arrogance. So and this is the council, and you are trying to ask for sympathy for the aggrieved police officers. The police officers are responsible for enforcing the law. When they are being provoked, when they're being insulted, they can abide by the relevant laws and their general orders to deal with the situation. Frankly, I myself and Mr. Leng Kwok Hong were the only two members here who got sprayed by pepper spray, who got arrested and prosecuted and convicted in court. So Mr. Leng Kwok Hong and I never scolded any police officers during public meetings and public processions. We never scold police officers. And I even wrote a book about it, My Defense in Court. We never talk back. But this is the evil bill. This is the evil bill. So what is all the nonsense about the notice of no objection? Did we need such a notice between 1997? You were also in the force, Mr. Lee Kwok Tong. This is our responsibility to handle such political assemblies and public meetings. And you, as an enforcement law agency, you should also be prudent about it. A relaxed approach should be adopted instead of a restricted one. And you keep on saying that, well, we should respect the law, respect the court. Well, I am lodging an appeal at the moment. But we understand the plight of the police. They are law enforcement officers. This is an evil law, and it is their duty to enforce the evil law. What we are looking into is the instructions given from the senior level to frontline officers in handling such situations. Secretary, well, how violent can the public meetings, public processions in Hong Kong be? We have the most violent people, the person here sitting in front of me. An unlawful assembly that was just my first conviction, and I was sentenced to six weeks imprisonment. So Secretary, well, we're not going to take any step back. We are willing to fight against you. But 2,000 years ago, when the Confucius talked about the governance of the state, he talks about externally, military defense, and also internal order. The police is tasked to maintain law and order. We also delegate powers for them to do so. But these powers are not unlimited. Well, what's that facial expression? What's this smirk? Do you think you are almighty after meeting Mr. Zhang Dejiang? Can you tell us some of your comments or enlighten us on how this situation can be resolved? No. I can tell you that this will just continue to deteriorate. Well, we have lots of public meetings nowadays in Hong Kong, and how violent are they? The person who blew a whistle, well, that person was sent to prison. And what else? How violent were they? The large canisters, pepper spray. Well, will you call this violent? We, well, there was nothing we can do, but we went ahead for public meetings anyway. And what's the purpose of today's meeting? This is a pro-police officer meeting. So Ms. Sit Ho, you really made a mistake in calling for this meeting. Next, Mr. Lee Che Yan, followed by Mr. Yu Si Ming.
Well, of course, Ms. Sit Ho called for this meeting to talk about the enforcement of law by a police officer in an unfair manner. So I think this is a very clear picture here. The pro-establishment members colluding with the administration. They are only talking about one point, insult on police officers. Now, the respect for police officers is not based on whether the police officer should talk back when being insulted. The respect comes about whether the police officer is acting in accordance with the law and whether he is being fair and impartial. If he isn't, then there is no respect for them. I think the CEP, Mr. Andy Zhang, should take up the responsibility because his instructions have caused frontline police officers a very difficult job because these instructions are not reasonable, and frontline officers have to take the blame. And they need to wait, say, half an hour, an hour, for instructions to be given again. And we therefore see so many conflicts. So Secretary, the problem has to do with the decisions made by the Commissioner of Police. For example, for the 1st of July march, the police categorically said that all six lanes would be open for public procession when there were too many people. But in the end, they refused. So that was your problem, the same with the liaison office. Very often, it was very clear that all people or all participants could go through the place, but you stopped some of them. So that was your problem. The second problem is enforcing the law in an unfair manner. And this is the reason why the police is not being respected and being insulted. And why is this happening? Is it because you are giving favoritism to certain groups with the words "love" in this title? Now, in fact, we do see this happening. People do see this favoritism going on. For the Youth Care Association, they clashed with Falun Gong, and you did not segregate them. And when CY Leng visited the district, you did not immediately stop the people who were beating up others nearby, although you subsequently did arrest somebody. What about Ms. Chan Yook Fong? She was arrested a year after the incident happened. And that's what we called enforcing the law in an unfair manner. In Saiyuan Choy Street, well, the police witnessed somebody being beaten up, and the assailant was not arrested. Then there was a row, and in the end, both of them were arrested. And arrested or prosecuted, well, at least arrested. The police arrested both of them. The police arrested both of them. The victim, in the end, became the suspect. That's enforcing the law in an unfair manner. It's the Commissioner of Police that caused all the troubles to frontline police officers. So the major culprit is Mr. Andy Zhang, the C P. I also urge everyone not to put the blame on frontline police officers because the major blame lies with the Secretary for Security and the C P. Secretary, well, may I briefly give a response?
First of all, I agree with Mr. Lee Che Yeon. The police should enforce the law in a fair and impartial manner. We have only one set of standards and one set of laws. Regardless of the people's background or the affiliation or positions, we will strictly enforce the law against any illegal behavior. About the incident in Tin Shui Wei, the commander there and then explained to the media the whole incident. On the spot, somebody was arrested, and after the incident, some further arrests were made. After investigation, if I remember correctly, some have already been prosecuted, some have been released on insufficient evidence. Now, about Ms. Chan Yook Fong, I don't wish to disclose too much details here, but I'd like to invite members to read the statement issued by the Department of Justice on this incident. In relation to demonstrations and processions, I'd like to point out the reference section under the Public Order Ordinance. These provisions have been subject to legal challenges, and we have appeals all the way up to the Court of Final Appeal. And the Court of Final Appeal has already made a judgment. The police is enforcing the provisions in accordance with these case laws. Well, if there is allegations, an allegation that the police is imposing unreasonable conditions, the organizers of the event could discuss with the police. Even if an agreement could not be reached, the organizer could lodge an appeal with an independent appeal board. I recall that on the 1st of July or the day before that, during a march, the organizer or some demonstrators were not happy with the conditions imposed by the police. Both parties appeared before the Appeal Board on the public meetings and processions, and a decision had been made. I believe, under the existing mechanism, a balance has been struck. We have a fair and impartial and independent appeal board. But some things were not dealt with on the spot. Some incidents arose simply because the police refused to allow demonstrators to use, take up more space. Next, Mr. Yu Si Ming. Some criticized the Police General Orders for not, for the ambiguities. And a soon-to-retire police officer came out during a public meeting to express support for a particular group. So my question is that the police should enforce law in a fair and impartial manner. And how can the administration instill such important principles to frontline police officers?
I'll try to give a brief reply, and then Mr. Wong will supplement. According to the Police General Orders, the relevant provisions have been there for a long time, and they have been implemented accordingly. I don't think it's right for me to comment on individual provisions, but as a general comment, the Police General Orders have been updated to be relevant, and of course, there's room for review. And from time to time, timely provisions will be carried out so as to meet with the expectations of the community. Perhaps Mr. Wong can supplement. Mr. Wong? Yes, for the P G Os, every year, and in fact, every, any time, we are always looking at the different provisions in all the chapters. So this is what the secretary has already said. We're reviewing it, updating it all the time. As to the court of behavior of our police officers, we do have high expectations. Police officers have to pledge allegiance that they will be fair, just and impartial in discharging the duties. They did so on the first day of joining the force. And we, in the management, will provide support to the police officers so that they will be impartial and professional in their work, and then we can uphold a high standard of behavior. Ms. Yu? So in other words, for the Police General Orders, they are being revised and updated all the time. So please tell me when it was last revised. And then, what about the case in which a superintendent took to the stage to render support to a particular group? Would that be covered as well? Mr. Wong? For the P G Os, well, they cover a number of issues. It isn't just on showing support. I think we need to strike a balance. In this case, we can see that a policeman is also a Hong Kong citizen. So under the Basic Law and under the Bill of Rights Ordinance, police officers also enjoy different kinds of rights and freedoms. But then, police officers have to be impartial in discharging the duties and have to be politically neutral. So we try to balance the various requirements, and we have spelt out the activities that police officers cannot take part in and what other activities they can join. Ms. Yu? Well, for this superintendent, who was taking his pre-retirement leave prior to his retirement, well, the media as well as the public have been quite unclear about the position of this officer. So what is his status at that time? Was he a retiree or not? Mr. Wong? Well, at that time, this colleague was already taking his pre-retirement leave. So he has already lost his police warrant card. In other words, he could no longer take up any police duties. Mr. Yu Kin Yun? And then, Mr. Ng Leng Sing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we all agree on one point. There is, we have high expectations of the police. We need the police to maintain public order. As to whether the police can handle the situations in a fair manner, it is important. If you're being fair to me, then I will respect you. I think it's two-way. And then, the police have to count on public support before they can effectively maintain law and order. I've got a few questions to ask. First of all, in today's paper, we've been told that while maintaining law and order, the police will take appropriate measures to segregate the groups who have different views. But then, for the public meeting in Saiyuan Choy Street, I don't think the groups, the opposing groups, were separated. And in fact, they were allowed to confront each other. So it appears that this is different from what you have said in your reply. And then, Ms. Yu also mentioned that for the public meeting in Mong Kok, there was a police officer who was already on his pre-retirement leave, and he took part in the event. I have this question. Yes, we understand that he has already returned his police warrant card. He can no longer, he could no longer discharge police duties. But does it mean that he is no longer regarded as a policeman? Does it mean that he had no need to meet the requirements under the Police General Orders? Please give a firm reply. And then, on the 1st of August, there was a police statement saying that for the public meeting in Saiyuan Choy Street on the 4th of August, it would not be regarded as political activity under the P G O. But then, P G O was written in such a way that it's more than that. Police officers, according to that provision, should avoid taking part in activities which may prejudice his image of being able to discharge his duties in a fair and just manner. So it is not regarded as a political activity, but then would be regarded as possibly affecting a policeman in being fair and just in discharging the duties. Understand that on that occasion, there were many police officers taking part. If it was not known to us, then we would have assumed that they were ordinary citizens. But then later on, we were given to understand that a lot of them were police officers. And then, according to the footage, some of them were having conflicts and scuffles with the demonstrators. Would that be a conflict, would it conflict with the police duties? Mr. Wong? For what happened on the 14th of July in Mong Kok, Mr. Yip said that the police did not take any action to segregate the two groups.
Well, what I want to say is that, on that day, at the scene, the field officers took into account the prevailing circumstances as well as the manpower available to resort to appropriate measures. Indeed, there was some segregation. But then, at that time, it might not generate results instantly. It might take time to achieve that effect. And prior to that, we had had experience of dealing with such groups. Usually, after being advised, they would express their views separately. We might not be there all the time, and they might behave differently. It might be beyond our expectation. But on that day, the police took into account the prevailing circumstances, and the field commander made the most appropriate decision. There was another question as to whether retiring police officers are still police officers. I think you were referring to a police officer who was on pre-retirement leave. You are right, he could no longer exercise his power as a policeman. But if you ask a specific question, and in fact, according to the P G Os, if they are relevant and applicable, they will still be applicable to such a police officer. It is said that if some of them are still applicable, then they will still be applicable. Who will make the judgment as to which part is still applicable to this officer?
I think your question is understood. Officer? Mr. Wong? Should there be any doubt? Should there be any doubt as to whether there would be any breach of the orders? Then we can get legal opinion from the Department of Justice. As to the status of that colleague in question? Well, in fact, there was a complaint concerning the conduct of such a police officer. Therefore, there's no need for me to go into the details now. Mr. Chairman, regarding the questions that I've asked, I would like to get a more detailed reply. I think we want to be told clearly as to which parts will be applicable, which not. I think the reply just given wasn't quite clear.
Well, I think this is not easy. I think I would like to ask for a written reply. Mr. Wong, do you understand the question? Are you going to give us something in writing? Mr. Chairman, I understand the question. It will be very difficult. I think you think along the same lines as we do. It will be difficult to comment which one does not apply. What I was saying was that he could no longer exercise any police powers.
Mr. Yip? I heard your question. If you have any specific points for clarification, please tell us. Ask more specific questions so that the secretariat can pass them to the police. Mr. Ng Leng Sing? And then, Mr. James Tong? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, there would have been too many questions for us to write them out. Well, this meeting arose from the use of foul language by the teacher. Well, there was someone from the education sector saying that sometimes it would be justifiable. But I just didn't know where to draw the line. I think it would not be possible for the police to come back with a reply in writing because you can't be exhaustive. Now, we have been told that the Hong Kong Police Force have been very effective. Maybe we need the policeman on horseback. Maybe Mr. Lan Kwah Hong will take the lead to confront such policemen on horseback. We can't have any offense to deal with people insulting the policeman. I'm afraid that members of the public will suffer because it means that there will be people who will be allowed to do whatever they want, affecting others. Now, it has been said that it's not easy to create an offense in relation to insulting police officers. What about other disciplinary services? Can you not work with them as well? So that in future, we can handle such matters there is when public interest is being jeopardized in a public event, in a public order event. If there isn't an offense that you can invoke to arrest such persons, people would then say that perhaps we should do nothing about it. But I want to know what impact will there be on public interest? And then, somebody talked about a divided society. But then, it's a matter of failing to meeting the conditions imposed by the police in advance on the organizers of the public order event. But on the spot, they didn't follow. So I want to know whether there is any penalty so that we can punish organizers who fail to meet the conditions later down by the police. We should name and shame them so that in future, they shouldn't get the permission. And will there be any reward for police officers who have exercised restraint? And for officers who get injured or who get insulted or could get disturbed by, say, for example, having a whistle being blown next to his ear? Would they get anything in return for being so tolerant? And please also tell others if they should resort to the same behavior. Do they expect any punishment? And then, during weekends, you may be caught in a traffic jam. And you can't obey the call of nature because the road is being blocked by the demonstrators. Sometimes, they become so intolerant that they would like to get off from their cars and try to give a helping hand to the police officers.
Secretary? First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Ng for being so concerned about the challenges and difficulties faced by the policemen. Now, if the police force has a low level of morale, if we can't maintain law and order in good way, then it means that it is something that we don't want to see happen.
then it means that um it is something that we don't want to see happening. So it is important to show respect. As to public opinion, I'm sure uh public opinion will play a very important role in generating or showing respect to the policeman. I've already said that we don't have plans to create an offense against humiliation against the policeman. But we'll be watching it and then we'll try to see if we can do anything after an assessment.
As for punish and rewards, punishment and rewards, if I um am not mistaken, for excellent performance, we do have rewards for such police officers. We have a mechanism, but this is usually carried out internally within the force. We just do not publish um the awards in the newspapers. For um exemplary performance or of exemplary bravery, uh some special uh some special award will be given. For example, um you can see some uh uh some of the officers wearing a red lanyard on their uniform and well, in the event of illegal behavior, the police will take decisive measures to enforce the law. And I must emphasize that we're talking about incidents happening at public meetings and public processions. The illegal behaviors will be investigated and upon investigation, these incidents will be passed to the Department of Justice to, for them to consider whether the personnel should be prosecuted. Mister James To.
Thank you, Chairman. Many colleagues um are urging the administration or supporting the administration in considering the enactment of an offense called insulting a police officer. Has the administration considered whether this is appropriate? As I understand, even the police groups have great reservations on this offense. Now, do you understand their philosophy? And many members of the public have told me that off-duty police officers and officers who are not on pre-retirement leave attend such public meetings. Now, the administration issued a statement saying that their rights should also be respected in view of the present circumstances. So have you considered whether the frontline police officers would like to change the Police General Orders so that they can freely express their views at any political meetings, Secretary? Now, on insulting a police officer, my reply to Mister James To's question is that apart from healing views from the community, we also have regular meetings with internal police units and police groups. And at present, the administration does not have any plan to enact a law concerning insulting police officer. Now, I say we will pay close attention to the law enforcement duties by frontline officers. Now, uh that's because frontline police officers face hu- uh many challenges. And for frontline police officers, they they face various challenges and we must keep ourselves up to date and understand their challenges. And that's basically our direction. And I'll defer to Mister Wong to take the second part of the question. Thank you.
Now, regarding um public meetings, whether the orders can be relaxed for police officers to take part in them? I think the crucial point is that whilst carrying out their official duties, police officers must be politically impartial. Um they must act in a fair and an impartial manner. So they must avoid attending meetings and putting themselves in circumstances where the public would feel that they um um would be prejudiced. But on the other hand, we also need to respect their right to our freedom of expression. So we need to strike a balance. Uh my question is, have you received any request from any police groups or unions on relaxing their requirements under the Police General Orders on attending public meetings? No, we have not received any such request at the moment. Now, another question, can the administration elaborate on their answer? I understand that the offense of insulting police officer has been thoroughly considered by police unions and they have not expressed any strong views on the enactment of such an offense. Mister Wong?
Well, let me put it this way. At present, we do not have any consultation or survey to gauge whether they think there is such a need. All right, you don't have a consultation, but you do exchange views with them on various matters. I understand that from the staff side, they have never mentioned their wish to enact such a piece of law. That's correct. Next, Mister Lam Kwok Hong. Insulting a police officer, those who make this suggestion should really study the law. Insulting a police officer means insulting the Queen.
That means insulting the letters patent and the royal instruction. In any civilized society, we have police officers. They have special duties of maintaining law and order. If somebody can be alleged of insulting a police officer, then no complaint can be lodged, at least not and not on the spot. So we can just put this thought aside. Secondly, I think Mister Kwak Waikang has somewhat exaggerated. Of course, the police officers are employees. And I help them. Well, I help some people in labor claims. And if you talk about labor rights, then well, we can, we we can do nothing but stay put because a state will always favor the rich. And the third point is about Zhang Dejiang. Well, Secretary, do you have any minutes of the meeting with Zhang Dejiang? And what instructions have been given to you? He refused to, I mean, he did not meet C Y Lang, he met you instead. C Y Lang very much wanted to meet him, but um didn't happen. Zhang Dejiang, in twenty oh six, in the White Swan Hotel, when Mister Kim from North Korea went to Guangzhou and he asked the place to be cleared for the dictator to be there. So um so I'm really concerned what he had, what he had said to you. So what's the purpose of Zhang Dejiang meeting you? He should make the speech to C Y Lang directly, not to you. Well, what's relevant, Mister Lam Kwok Hong? Well, our topic today is not about Zhang Dejiang. Please come back to our topic today. Well, please just let me finish, please. So what about insulting a police officer? What instructions have Zhang Dejiang given you after he met you? Did he ask the police to step up the enforcement of the Police General Orders? Well, this Police General Orders is very peculiar. It's an internal guideline. And Mister Wong made a very interesting answer. You just said that upon being a question that you would review the situation from time to time. And please give me a report on how many reviews you had and on what topics. Can you give me a copy of the Police General Orders? Uh Ng Leng Shing talked about police on horseback. And well, why don't we use tanks instead? It's much easier um for maintenance. And that's, that those were used during the June fourth incident. And another point I wish to make is on public order ordinance. This is an evil piece of law? Now, actually, the points made by members are rebutted by the court. It has been struck off because um one must pay attention to local customs, etc. And um one cannot say that um other people's feelings should be considered and whether obstruction would be caused to other road users. You should read the judgment. If the police had closed the road, then other road users would not have used that road. They would not have been subject to traffic jams instead. Secretary, a brief response? Zhang Dejiang, please, anything, any response? Any minutes or record? Can you give me a copy? Now, the remarks made by Mister Zhang Dejiang have been cited in media in detail. Now, what's the relevance of how these remarks were published? Well, honestly, I don't know Mister Zhang Dejiang. Next, Mister Dennis Kwak. Mister Lam Kwok Hong, your time is up. Your time is up, Mister Dennis Kwak.
Thank you, Chairman. On the eighth of August, the police issued a statement in relation to a public meeting at Saoyang Choi Street on the fourth of August. And according to the information, it was not classified as a political event. Uh I believe that if this is in accordance with Police General Orders, chapter six point oh one, bracket thirty four. That was how the decision was made. And I'd like to know what reference the police had had made in making this decision. We make reference to the information given by the Civil Service Bureau, such as what director? I'm referring to the activity that took place that day in Mong Kok. On what information do you base your decision on in saying that it's not a political activity? Now, in Police General Orders, chapter six one oh one, bracket thirty four, it talks about political activities and there are five of them. Let him explain first. No, I have read them, so I'll just go straight to the question. Now, um political activities organized by a political group, of course, is a political um activity. So would you regard the organizer of that event as something other than a political group? Maybe I'll read out the statement.
No, you don't have to do that. I have read the statement. Are you telling me that the organizer of the event that day was, is not a political organization? Well, um the statement was as follows. The political activity was not one that was subject to the um the Police General Orders. So are you saying that the organizer of that political activity is not a political organization? Uh Chairman, the member should not speak directly to the administration. He must go through you. My question is very clear. I asked for a direct answer. We don't quite understand. Many members of the public do not understand what information has formed the basis of the police saying that it is not a political activity. Are you saying that the organizer of that political activity is not a political organization? Thank you for the question. And I'd like members to bear in mind that we should refrain from any direct dialogue with the administration. You can put forward a question and then the administration will reply to your question. Please wait for me to give you the cue before you ask a question.
Mister Wong, thank you, Mister Chairman. In relation to the activity held on that day, according to the information on that day, we judged that the nature of the activity wasn't a political activity. But then Mister Kwak asked you whether the organization wasn't a political organization. Well, I think one of the co-organizers was called Hong Kong Action. I think very clearly, they have claimed themselves to be a political organization on the internet. So please tell us why you have said that it isn't a political activity organized by political um organization, because thirty four A has made it very clear. So if the organizer claims itself to be a political organization and yet you still regard it as not being a political activity, why is it so, Mister Wong?
Well, uh we looked at the theme of the activity that day. I think it was to um eliminate the um vulgar culture from school campus in support of the police. So you know that the political organization was the organizer, but you regarded the nature of that activity as not being political. Well, any organization um will receive the same treatment from us. But then in view of the theme that they have announced, we believe that it is covered. So you don't look at the nature of the organization. When you give that statement, you didn't take that into account. Is that the case?
Secretary, my understanding is that on the eighth of August, the police issued a statement. They said that uh it wasn't a political activity um defined by the General Orders. The police made it clear as to what political activities would be governed. So the police statement was that it wasn't an activity defined according to the General Orders. Maybe Mister Kwak has a broader definition for political activities. But then for the General Orders of the police, um the rule was very specific. It allowed a number of scenarios. I think the spirit was that, is that when police officers take part in activities, they have to pay attention to one point. That is, when they do take part, they have to think as to whether the participation would give others the impression that it would interfere with the impartial discharge of his duties in the future. My understanding is that this is the spirit of that particular order. And then the police, in accordance with the information available on that day, came to such a judgment. Mister Po Che and then Mister Chen Kam Lam.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. To facilitate everybody to understand this, in particular for the members of the public, I think it will be difficult to say who is in the right, who is in the wrong. Now, let's take a look of what it is like in Hong Kong vis-à-vis the attitude of the police and the enforcement duties of the police when I was young. And then And then, there's the vertical comparison. And then horizontally, we can compare the performance of the police force with their counterparts elsewhere in the world. I think the Hong Kong Police Force is very professional. That's the first point. Second point is that for any organization exercising public order powers, they must have a certain degree of dignity. Otherwise, they cannot command any authority so as to discharge the duties and to enforce the public powers. Take the judiciary as an example. The judiciary works after the law enforcement agencies have done their work. If we have the contempt of court audit offense, why can't we have something similar to protect the policeman? I think just now Mr. Leng said that humiliating the police would be the same as humiliating the crown in the past. I think this is not the case. In the case of the judiciary, we attach a lot of importance to the dignity of the courts. But then the courts must also maintain an impression of neutrality. So, the judges, we do have a lot of respect for them. And then, the judges are not supposed to comment lightly on any cases in public. And they shouldn't tell us about their political stance because we don't want the authority being eroded. I think it should be the same for the police. Now, it is said that we should consider whether there should be an offense against swearing at the police. But in fact, we have already got such an offense. If you look at paragraph 34, there is already such an offense. It is a matter of you are not supposed to humiliate or insult your senior or your peer policeman in the cause of duty. Now, we expect the policeman to be obedient. But why is it that we mind very much that there should be an offense against swearing at policeman? I think after full consultation and fully justified, we can then consider having such an offense. But please don't have the misunderstanding that we don't have an offense covering swearing at policeman. Now, it has also been said that a certain piece of legislation may be an evil bill, and so we can turn a blind eye to it. As to the line between politics and law enforcement, I think it's a thin line. I don't think we can afford not to enforce the law just because there is a political reason. I think there are two sides of the coin. So, we need to strike a balance as to when to enforce it and when not. It is an art. However, for certain behavior, I think it is political. Say, for example, you need to notify before you can have a public meeting. You may well think that such rights should be protected. However, if you assault others when there's criminal damage or if you incite others to resort to violence or in more serious cases, like in the country of Egypt, there was violence and then they will use that as an excuse to assault the female sexually. So, we have to find out where we should draw the line. On the one hand, dignity and authority to be given adequately. Otherwise, others would use this as a political excuse to engage in unlawful acts. I still have some time left. Whenever somebody is the subject matter of law enforcement, then he will say that it has been unfairly, he has been unfairly treated. For those quite triad elements, I think criminal lawyers have a different attitude towards the triad elements. Otherwise, they can't discharge the duties effectively. Next, Mr. Chen Kam Lam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just now, Mr. Dennis Kwok was almost interrogating our Director of Operations, trying to get an answer from him, trying to force him to admit that an activity organized by political organization should be regarded as a political activity. I think it is a very absurd kind of logic. Not all activities organized by a political organization would be political in nature. Even for non-political organizations, they may hold political events. So, it is easy to understand. I found it surprising to hear such arguments coming from the mouth of a barrister. Mr. Chairman, the core values in Hong Kong are freedom, democracy, and the rule of law. We can't just emphasize liberty and democracy at the expense of the rule of law. No one can do anything in breach of the law. No one can destroy the law and order in Hong Kong. It is totally unacceptable. Since the return of Hong Kong to China for the police to manage the crowd during public meetings and demonstrations, the police have been most lenient. You may use a jargon and say that they have been exercising self-restraint to a large extent. However, if you have ever watched the video clip on YouTube and then you will find that there was a teacher swearing at a policeman, you will be most upset by that footage, and it would be most unacceptable. Regarding such a video clip, what is the administration's response? What about the reaction of the police officer? Would you say that he is exercising excessive restraint if he tolerating too much? Because for being so tolerant or being too tolerant, it may also cause repercussions in the society. The teacher, Miss Lam, used abusive language, and she targeted a dead particular police officer. I have full admiration for this police officer for the attitude adopted in handling the situation. I'm afraid that others who had to face such a persistent abuse would certainly answer back. So, Secretary, I want to know whether you have issued any guidelines? That is, when faced with such abusive language, does the police tell the officers that they mustn't answer back? Or have you ever drawn a line as to to what extent they should take it? Now, it is twenty-four minutes past four. And for the second round, we have Ms. Ho and Mr. Kwak Wai Keng wishing to ask questions. Anybody else? If not, then I would say that we can at most extend the meeting by fifteen minutes. Would it be agreeable?
Well, I will draw a line after the two members have asked questions again because I myself have some comments to make. So, we'll end the meeting by four forty-five. Mr. Wong, first of all, in relation to what Mr. Chen had said, he has given recognition to our work. I say Mr. Chen for that. For the reaction of the police officer, if you say that we don't answer back when insulted or scolded, I agree. We don't want to have a shouting match between police officers and members of the public. At that time, officers had to handle other things as well. So, warning was given and no other action like arrest was taken. I firmly believe that the officer at that time made a right decision. But of course, afterwards, when we try to examine it again as to whether we could have done it better, I think we can always do such, do that. Mr. Chen, I, I think the police shouldn't be having a shouting match with the protesters. But then, if a police officer is being abused, yes, maybe people would get emotional. If, if it is a single phrase of abuse, I think you can tolerate it. But what about if it goes on for ten plus minutes? I think you need to consider it very carefully.
Mr. Wong, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, at that time, the police officer made a judgment according to the prevailing circumstances. He had to look at the work he had to do at that time. He had to judge the priorities. So, if at that time he thought that a warning could stop it, then maybe he would resort to such a decision. On the other hand, had, had the situation worsened, then he might have resorted to another route of action, say, for example, arrest. But still, I believe that given the prevailing circumstances, the public officer was very tolerant and he was very restrained, and I think he has done very well.
Second round, three minutes each. Ms. Ho followed by Kwak Wai Keng. Now, many colleagues talked about insulting a police officer. What about other offenses like insulting the administration, etc.? Well, members of the public are not, are not angry with frontline police officers. They are angry with the government because there are government officials telling lies and then they're not required to bear any responsibilities. And that's why people are angry. Police officers receive official training on the use of violence. They are not ordinary citizens. They know how to exercise violence and what weak points to attack. And that is why they need emotion management as well. The police officers are professionals, and their professionalism is based on their fairness and impartiality. In nineteen ninety, there was a circular from the C S B, number twenty-six of nineteen ninety. And in it, it mentions political activities, and there are five examples. But this is not an exhaustive list because the wording is including. So, if reference is made to this C S B circular in nineteen ninety regarding political activities, one must bear in mind that this is not an exhaustive list. You cannot say that this is, that event was not a political activity simply because it was not included in one of the five as mentioned in the circular. In English, the wording is even clearer. It says, for example, which means there could be others. So, when Mr. Dennis Kwok asks you, on what basis did you say that it was not a political activity? In fact, you had, you did not answer the question. And in fact, members of the public are questioning the lack of impartiality of police officers enforcing the law. I questioned off-duty officers in attending political activities. Because we know that off-duty officers are actually colleagues with those officers in uniform on duty. And when off-duty police officers express support for a particular group, then no matter what action is taken by the officers on duty, this will be questioned by the general public. And we see online that there are indeed offline, off-duty police officers attending political activities. What have you done to clear the public's impression of the police being, not being fair and impartial, apart from what you've mentioned? Now, about political activities, according to the circular, there are five of them as stated, and this is clear. As for enforcing the law unfairly, I cannot agree. The police enforces the law in a fair and impartial manner. And we fully understand that if the activities that the police officer is attending will prejudice his conducting of official duties, then he must refrain from such participation. All right, Mr. Kwak Wai Keng. Now, many colleagues spoken just now talked about the police exercising restraint and the, and the members of the public exercising restraint and respect towards the police. But when there are real conflicts and clashes, they do encourage their supporters to, to throw abuse at the police. And we do see the police officers being treated as punchbacks. Now, members, for example, Ms. Ho and other members from the Labor Party attacking police officers. But you represent the labor sector, so shouldn't you protect police officers as employees? Apart from physical harm? Well, is it a point of order? Is it a point of order? Please state their point of order. Yes, this is a point of order, Chairman. Now, when other members are speaking, and some members may refer to a particular member or other political parties, and this is not uncommon in, in the council. All right, so unless this is a point of order, I won't deal further with your question. This is a point of order. First of all, there is no chance for me to respond. If it were chaired by the President, well, I would be given a chance to respond since I has been, I have been named. And he has made offensive remarks just now, and I asked Chairman to ask him to withdraw his remarks. Well, during the council meeting, whether there is always a chance for the member being named to make a response? I have personal experience, and this is not always the case. As for this phrase of offensive remarks that saying that you're saying something untrue, then I don't really think that this is offensive. Oh, Chairman, if you think so, then maybe your language proficiency is not that good. Mr. Kwok? I just want to point out that employees face a lot of challenges. Physical and mental health and also inju, physical and mental injuries on, at work should be, should be protected. And just now, the Director of Operations from the police said that the police officers have received professional training to tackle such situations. But does it mean that they can waive any protection just because they have professional training? Just like scaffolding workers, well, employers are required to give them enough protection, for example, fall arresters and etc., to protect them from falling. So, it's for the employers to consider carefully how and what protection should be given to the police force when they are having such a huge workload so that they can remain calm in tackling such complex issues in the society now. All right, I don't think Secretary needs to reply. Now, today's meeting is about the enforcement of law by the police officers and on Police General Orders. Now, I once came across a video clip online about a police officer booking a driver. And it took three or four minutes. And there was, there was, I mean, the whole conversation was strewn with vulgar language. I myself find it problematic because it affects the whole society of Hong Kong. If the police is not respected in enforcing the law, then this is disastrous for, or catastrophic for Hong Kong. As many members pointed out today, I think the most crucial point is for the police to enforce the law in a fair and impartial manner. Whether you're supporting the police or you're criticizing the police, our fellow members agree that the police should enforce the law in a fair and impartial manner. And I also agree with it. Of course, in the course, well, some members might have firsthand experience. They might think the police hasn't been fair and impartial. They has, they haven't exercised restraint. And yet, I think the decision or the judgment should be left to the general public. So, we have expressed our views at this meeting, and I must make this point. About the offense of insulting a police officer, we have heard from the Secretary for Security that the administration is not considering enacting such an offense as for Mr. Lan Kwah Hong's suggestion, saying that insulting a police officer is equivalent to insulting the crown. Then, well, I have to go back and look into it and see if whether this is the case. I think the general public would like to see a highly efficient and impartial and fair police force to serve the public in order to have a, have good law and order in Hong Kong. So, that's the end of our meeting. Thank you.